Cindy, the camera back. Camera back to that.
It's on.
That one for now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the richest fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight with heavy hearts. Our neighbor in Kentucky is suffering so. We feel very fortunate that we're in our nice homes that are torn up or our city is still intact. Please help those people. And we also need to help them anyway financially. Each individual feels the need to do. Thank you, Lord, for everything you have given us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to call this meeting the Jackson City Council to order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Foster.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Kobe.
Yes.
Peters.
Here.
New Kirk.
Here.
Biggs.
Here.
Bob.
Here.
On the agenda, we will start with the visitors and recognition. We'll start with mayor. I think you have a couple of things to start with.
I do. Cindy, if you'll switch the camera now. The, I'm going to ask, you guys are better, Tracy Plants, she is my executive assistant and our project coordinator. I'm going to ask her to come forward. Last April, I read a letter here in council. Put it on camera. For all of America. Now, don't try to hide behind you, right there. This is a camera shot. I read a letter to you all from three students at Northview Elementary that had sent to me asking about us making some improvements at the skate park at the city Hillcrest Park. I've invited a couple of them in tonight, and a couple of them are here. Boys, if you'll come forward, come right up here with Tracy, please. You might hold on to, pretend this is a mic. And you are?
Reed Fane.
Reed Fane, and you are?
Carson Strickland.
Carson Strickland, and Thelfer, didn't you? Anyway, and there was another one, Harley Harrison, right? At the time, they were fifth graders. Now, they're big middle schoolers, down to middle school. They had asked us about making some improvements to the skate park. So Tracy and I met with them actually out in Northview after I had read you guys their letter. But they wrote on their own. And so now I'm going to let Tracy tell you what happened after that and what has happened recently. Okay, Tracy, it's your turn.
Well, as with every project, we had to go find funding for it in order to make it happen. So when an opportunity came across our desk from the Jackson County Community Foundation for a grant opportunity, we knew it was a good fit for this project because it was specifically targeting engaging the youth in our community. So I was able to make application for this grant and include the letter from these guys in the application. We received notice last week of an award from that community foundation. And I'd like to give a lot of this credit to Reed, Carson, and Harley for taking the initiative to write this letter that allowed us to make this application. Did you want to read the official notice?
Go ahead. No?
I think I do.
Is it in here? Is this it?
Yes.
You go ahead.
The city of Jackson is pleased to announce it has received a $4,820 grant from the Jackson County Community Foundation Fund of the Foundation for Appalachian Ohio and the I'm a Child of Appalachia Fund partnership. The Appalachian, the Foundation for Appalachian Ohio is a regional community foundation serving the 32 counties of Appalachian Ohio. These funds will support our Hillcrest Skate Park upgrade project. This project seeks to improve the current skate park by adding additional smaller ramps, also known as quarter pipes. Along with these grant funds, the city plans to contribute additional funding towards the Hillcrest Skate Park upgrade and overall improvements to the Hillcrest Park. And the city of Jackson is thankful to be selected for this grant award, which will provide our youth with more opportunity for healthy outdoor recreation and community involvement.
Now, I have a question for you. We're a little bit confused because in the letter, it says that you should make some bigger ramps for the really good people. But yet, when we talk to you out there from our notes, or if you, at least one of you, I don't know who, said you need some, you want a smaller quarter bike.
Harley.
Of course, the one that's not here, you're buying it on. So do you need bigger or smaller?
Smaller.
Smaller?
Yep.
Okay, so you need, so the stuff out there is too big for the beginners?
Yep.
Okay, well, we're going to try to, and with council had blessed us to try to spend, put some more money in the budget for the Hillcrest Park. So we're going to try to add some smaller, um...
Quarter bikes.
...equipment at the skate park. And we appreciate you for your interest, and hopefully we'll get that done this spring or this summer. And I appreciate you all coming to the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tracy, you got jump on the other side up there. Look at the camera this way here. Yeah, there you go. Okay. One, two, and three. Thank you. And thank you, Tracy. Okay, next, Fire Chief Dave Channel, would you come forward, please? You've all, you all have met him too, right? Dave Channel. Thanks for coming, parents.
Thank you very much for all of that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay, since this administration, this council basically have been here the last two years, we've had several firefighters who have retired or resigned, whatever you call that when a volunteer quits showing up. So we wanted to invite them in to, just to recognize them and thank them tonight. And we've had a couple of them show up. So if you're on this list, if you'll please come forward.
I have to give you $4,800.
Maybe more. Maybe more. Come over here, Dave, and show your on camera here. Come right on up here. Right on up here, George. Right here, I want you on camera. Okay. I'm going to lead you a list of some of the members who didn't come tonight with various length of service. So not very long, but yet it was service. We had Jacob Kitchen, who was a firefighter for about a year and a half before he moved to Florida. Brad Dahl was a firefighter for about two years. Mike Klingeman was a firefighter for like 21 years and decided it was time to retire. Christopher Boyle, you might recognize him, his name, he was for six years. Taylor Ray, who I never met, was for a couple of years. Duane Shank, 21, over 21 years as a firefighter. Christopher Stanley, 14-plus years as a firefighter. Wendell Vermillion, they didn't give me complete data when he actually retired, but he had been a firefighter since 2004, so probably 15 years or better. Joe Vermillion, his son, 22 years as a Jackson firefighter, still currently a city employee. Jeff Yonam, you might remember when he retired last year as our assistant fire chief, 29, over 29 years to the fire department. Then there is Kathy Stewart, who is here tonight, wife of former service director Bill Stewart. She was 12-plus years in the fire department. She's looking at me like that's wrong, so correct me.
Forty.
Forty-five years.
Okay, well, you got a very wrong date here on her job.
She was on and then...
Took a break?
Right.
Then come back.
To order retirement out.
Yep.
And when you do that, you have to start over.
Okay, so how many years total?
Forty-five years.
Forty-five years, Jackson Fire Department. Folks, I'm not even that old. Well, maybe I am.
You're on camera now.
Okay, I am. And we have George Wastir, which I don't know when you retired, George, but this says you started in 1962. Is that correct?
That's what she said, yeah.
How many years were you on the fire department?
I was over 50 when I, when I retired, and that was in 2018, or 2015.
So over 50 years, over 45 years. And our chief, Channel, do you want to tell them how many years you've been here?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine years, so, so this is 150 years of service right here, if you combine them. And I just wanted to, you know, we're, we are... Kaidan Newell, I had her listed for 46 and a half years of service. She couldn't make it tonight either. But just a tremendous amount of service that is missing now in the last two years from our fire department is why we are actively seeking new firefighters. And we wanted to recognize these and thank them for their service. So thank you for your... All right, girls, on three, ready? One, two, and three. Thank you, and congratulations. And if any other ones you say a few words, the council, you can, council in all of Jackson.
Well, I want to thank them for, everybody on the list, even though they're not here, they're either watching, they'll read it in the paper.
Well, I hope they are.
I want to thank them for all their years of service, and since George and Kathy's here, thanking to the, to the person, since they are here, for their years of service, leading the fire department, building it up, being on the association, raising money to buy equipment and donating to the city. You know, we've had a fun time together and been a lot of years.
Well, I started out chasing a fire truck up to the corner to see my dad fill up the tanker truck and to go fill up the wells out in the county. I loved going with him when we would go down to Cray's Orchard in Oak Hill. Oh, they had the best peaches. And the, the water cost $5, or the water cost $3.10 for 1,000 gallons of water. And Dad got $5 for delivering it. We filled Stifler's Pool. We, of course, half of you don't even know who Stifler's Pool, where that is. Rock Run. It's no longer there. And way back in the 50s, when the civil defense started, they, they contacted people from the high school to come fight forest fires. They would get kids out of school. My brother Art started that way. Steve, Steve did that, my brother Mark, and Sam, and, of course, Steve and Sam were both on the fire department for quite some time. Sam was on for 50 years, and Steve was on for about 30, 32, 34 years. So within our family, we have over 150 years of service to the city of Jackson. And I have appreciated all the wonderful help from the city and the, the kind words and when we'd save somebody's cat or dog and how much better that was and how, how big your heads would swell. So it's, it's been an interesting 45 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one kind of thing from way back. I don't know how many thousands dollars it takes to suit up a firefighter now with all the bunker gear and all that. Kathy's dad was the fire chief, and he approached council about getting gear. And one of the folks that was on the council who worked at Stifler's, that's Kathy, the segue there, said, can't you just go uptown and get him some raincoats? Fire surface has really changed in all those years, so...
They didn't go up and buy them either.
We may have to go back to what Kathy's mentioned, robbing the high school for firefighters. Dan, you want to say something?
I'd like to ask Kathy, how many years your father was the fire chief here? The Stevenson family was the fire department when I was a kid. All her brothers and so forth are roughly my age, and her dad was the, was the fire chief. Dedicated man.
That's how I got interested in it. When I was still in school, he would take me to Richmond, Indiana, to Indiana State Fire School with him, and I was still in school. We'd go out there for the weekend. So that's how I got interested in it.
Yeah.
You and Richard?
Yep, so it's been a nice run.
Well, we sure, well, David's not retired by the way. He's not retired yet, but we want, we want to thank you guys for your service and 150 years of service right here combined, and more than that from the Stewart family, and we just want to thank you again for your service.
At this time, we had Mr. Paul Beric, who signed up. So Mr. Beric, if you want to come up to the microphone, we'll give you three minutes here. So, Mr. Beric, if you want to come up to the microphone, we'll give you three minutes here to speak to us this evening, and...
Right there, Paul, right there.
Oh, there's one right there, I'm sorry, I was thinking of this one, but that's good, right there, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is it on? Can you hear Dan?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it on?
Yeah, yeah, okay. I worked for several years with the Department of Natural Resources reclaiming old strip mine land across southern Ohio. About twenty years ago approximately, I asked them to look at some old mine shafts that were present on property that I had in Jackson, over around the Jamestown area, trying to stabilize them, and they didn't have funds at that time. But recently, they contacted me that there was a different program available, and they do have funds that they could be used to stabilize some of those mine shafts. The first step was to have somebody from ODNR come down and confirm that it was an eligible project. That was done, we had an engineer come down, look at it, said, yep, mine shafts, and they can be stabilized. While they were looking at it, they also determined that they could do a lot more than that with the scope of the program that they had available, no cost to anyone locally, it would be a hundred percent funded by ODNR. They looked at the ground as possible development for economic purposes. We had about twelve acres there that we could level off and out of the floodplain, out of the floodway, and it would be suitable for economic development. Over around the Longworth, between Longworth and Jamestown, or the New Thirty-Five, the four lane, coming off of Broadway. Then we got to talking, and we realized that those old mines contributed an awful lot of gob into the bottom area that is now the city property. And we got talking further, it is possible that they would be very much interested in helping alleviate some flooding by getting rid of that gob, taking it out of the floodway and floodplain in Jackson. I had a picture taken years ago of my son, nobody would realize that it's there, but there's several feet of gob from the mines, from the Tropic Furnace Mine, the Eureka Mine, and later the Globe Furnace Mines. These, this gob piles probably twelve feet at its height in the center and covers several acres. We talked further, and they got to looking at Eddie Jones Park, and they said, well, why don't you consider creating a better park, getting rid of, improving the drainage, getting a water storage area, so we get more capacity, so Eddie Jones Park might not flood as easily. Can't stop the flooding problem in Jackson, can't stop the homeless problem in Jackson, but we could make an improvement. We could keep it a little drier part of the time. We could also, as a part of this project, regrade Eddie Jones Park a little bit with the approval of the Corps of Engineers, which they would secure, and take on the other side of that area, eliminate all the cattail swamps, drain that area, create it would be a dry water storage area, would get rid of the water, the cattails and mosquitoes in that area, a big improvement. Then we got to talking, well, what would you like to do with the area? So, the way the project works, ODNR asks rural action of Ohio to come up with a plan of what they want done. That plan is submitted to ODNR, ODNR then funds it, engineers it, and oversees everything about it to make sure that it's done. And we looked at, we have now met with rural action, and they have settled on three areas that they would like to see done for this city. They would like to see floodplain mitigation, they would like to see economic development in an area where we would need to bring in, that they would fund for, fund sewer, water, and gas into an area. They would also, let's see, economic development, floodplain, they would also like to see community development. They suggested a trail coming across Salt Creek, a bridge coming across Salt Creek, with a circular trail that would circle around the outside perimeter of this new park that would be created. We looked at Eddie Jones Park and the sad shape of the ball fields, and then it come up with the idea we would like to have some better ball fields, similar to what they funded in Wellston. They were the ones who were responsible at ODNR for funding the improvements to the park up in Wellston. That's about a one-point-four million dollar project. They also did the Moonville Trail up in Vinton County, between Moonville Trail up to Vinton. Same person, Terry Van Oferen, that spoke to me, was the one who wrote that grant and got it for them through ODNR. I just wanted you to be aware that we are in the final planning stages of this project. Community action is very much, or I mean rural action is very much in favor of it. They'd like to see us put some first-class ball fields, and some of the local people have thought it'd be great, it would get more utilization, if these fields had artificial turf on them for ball fields for the area. We think that might be a stretch, but anyway, we're in the final planning stages. So I just wanted you to be aware of it, and hopefully, we can work with the mayor and service director to get permission to do this, doesn't cost the city anything, mitigating floodplain. All the issues will take care by ODNR, they'll do all the engineering, funding, and design work. If there's any objection to us going forward, we'd like to know it, so we can continue our final submissions.
Mr. President, where do we sign?
I estimate the project will be well over a million dollars. So come in, Jackson's done.
Other questions for Mr. Beric?
Sounds good.
We thank you for your service, thank you.
I was going to say, thank you so much for heading this up and finding them, and wow.
Well, I have to say, I went along with the proposal for the ball field because I've got grandsons and granddaughter. We need softball facilities, we need baseball facilities that are good. Get them up out of the floodplain, get them drained, built, and improve the other fields that are around. They were even talking about possibly doing some tennis courts construction around. I know the homeless is a problem, but we can't let the homeless drug problem stop us from doing something that benefits the people.
Thank you.
Paul, I have a question.
Thanks, Paul.
Paul, so if this goes through, will part of that still be developed for economic development, or will it all be parked?
No, there are three goals that have been established so far by rural action. About, at least one, maybe two-thirds of the project will be for economic development. It will be graded and will be given to the Port Authority of Jackson to look for... We're more important than Santa Brady with economic development as well. Between the economic development and Port Authority, it's another site that we want to develop that has good light industry, not a heavy industry because we don't have very good access off Broadway for trucks and anything coming in there. It wouldn't be a good place for semis or anything like that. But for light industry, something like a data center, something like internet service providers, or something that needs good access to Thirty-Five, but not for heavy trucks.
Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, well, the other third of it, we would like to get those ball fields. I was asked if we could put some soccer fields or football fields in there. We can, with the understanding that if it had to be taken out later for economic development purposes, they would be only temporary. The ball fields need to be permanent for the kids. The traveling red, they're looking at concession stands, they'd like to see all we could put into this grant in terms of fencing and artificial turf, so that you don't have to play in the lightning, but at the rest of the time, it's available for use for the kids, for all ages and for all genders. We want enough fields that it'll help pre-up some of the other fields as well, and we can get adult, we can get girls softball, we can get as much recreational use out of them as we can. Plus, they're talking about tournaments, bringing in, oh, they say it'll bring in thousands of dollars of tournaments. That's not the primary goal of it, but that's sort of a side benefit.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Ms. Swackhammer?
Yeah, I want to thank Paul for coming in tonight. We've spoke probably on three different occasions, Paul, to say at least. And the last time we met, you know, Paul will be asking a letter of support from the city for this project, and I told Paul, I said, you know, if that's what we're going to do, if that's our next step, we need to get in front of council and have this conversation, which he's presented to you tonight, because we need the city's property in order to complete this process.
For the flood mitigation.
Yeah, for the flood mitigation piece of it. So it's not just a letter of support, but it's also the okay of allowing this activity on the city property as we move forward. So I just want to make sure that the council has the opportunity to ask any additional questions they may have of Paul, how he's here, and that, you know, we understand what Paul's asking of us in turn as a city as well.
Mr. President, I move that we have Mr. Kirby draft a resolution in support of the project.
Just a second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Later on, it will probably require some action on council for rezoning and other things that will have to take place. But as long as you're willing to support the project, we'll go forward with the final plan. Then we can get something on paper back to you.
Thank you. I think that ends our session on the agenda of visitors and recognition, so we'll move into the approval of the minutes. First, looking at our first meeting, our meeting on the twenty-second of November. I believe all of you've got copies in your packets. Is there any additions or corrections to be made to the minutes? Mr. Paul?
I think on page seven of the minutes, Mr. Bob's name was not put in as a voter. It might legally affect the emergency clause, I'm not sure about that, but he was available for all other votes.
It's on the back. It's on the back. It's just, it's not, I mean, there's a space there that shouldn't be there. So how that space got in there and threw it to the back?
I thought the space was where he was supposed to be. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes that presented in council. Ms. Peters, motion, is there a second, Ms. Colby? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Next, we'll look at the council minutes from our special session on November the twenty-ninth. Those two should be available in your packet for review. Is there any objections or corrections in these minutes from the twenty-ninth? Hearing none, I'll move to accept the motion to, for the minutes. Mr. Newkirk, is there a second? Mr. Paul, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion is carried. Next, on our agenda, we will look at committee reports, we'll begin with utility, Mr. Paul.
Under utility, it states there, there's a report in the binder, the utility committee did not meet, and that report is for the budget committee. The committee has nothing to report tonight.
All right, thank you. Next, on budget and finance, Mrs. Biggs?
No report at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Next, police, fire, and traffic, Ms. Colby?
No report at this time.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Yes?
The fire dependency report, that'll be first, at seven o'clock, about seven fifteen. Three members were there.
Glad you could make it.
Oh, I had a good time. And John Smith elected as president, they thought you could stay on as the secretary, okay? That's all.
Thank you. Next, service, Ms. Peters?
I met with Mr. Swackhammer briefly regarding changes to the cemetery ordinances, codified ordinances. We will report back at a later time, once those are finalized, that's all I had.
Any questions, service? None, thank you. Next, we'll have the police department report. Mr. Hinch?
Thank you, guys, I'll try to be relatively brief here. In your package, you can see the monthly statistics that the former chief, Potter, started to give you. I think that's a good way to just make sure that we're being accountable to you, that if you see great increase or great decrease in those numbers, you should probably come in and ask some questions as to why, there's usually an explanation for that. What I would like to highlight just a little bit, I'm not going to read you the boring statistic numbers. We're on pace to do similar to what we've done the last couple months, maybe a little bit of an increase. I'd like to highlight, where we talk about incident reports, we've already had thirty-seven so far by the thirteenth of, when I checked this morning. Just to highlight what some of those things are, so you have better understanding. On December first, and I'm going to keep names and addresses out of this because this is public, and I don't want to do that to people. But December first, Sergeant Witt was called to a well-being check on the west side of Jackson, and it really didn't meet the regular requirements that we have for well-being checks. Those can get abused, and so we kind of have to have a way to sort through whether we're going to go or whether we're not going to go to those. Didn't really meet the criteria, but there were a couple things that just made us a little curious. Sergeant Witt goes over, very experienced officer, new to the sergeant game. He discovers an elderly woman there, probably close to the brink of death, has been home alone for several days. He was able to force entry, get her immediate medical attention, and I did check today, it's been, it's been two weeks. She's in a rehab center, she's still alive today. And had Sergeant Witt not gone over there with his experience, I don't think that would be today's outcome. So I kind of want to commend him individually on that. We hired, as you guys remember, Patrolman Thompson, probably a couple months ago, she came through here. She's, she's did very well in her training program. She's been hitting the streets hard, a lot of increased in traffic stops, traffic activity, with kind of a focus on some drug interdiction. She's probably gotten thirteen grams of meth out of a multitude of stops in the last couple weeks. One impressive stop that really caught my attention, she was able, she was down near the filling station, witnessed two people in an alley, she thought it was suspicious. She interceded with these people, made contact, one of them ran, one of them didn't, looks like she picked the right one. So we have a drug trafficking case where the person that she had, who lied to her about who he was initially, he had a warrant outstanding, she was able to find enough methamphetamine individually packaged for sale. I think we all know that this stuff goes on, we all drive these streets, we see this stuff that looks suspicious to us. I just want to, I guess, reiterate that through some of the approval of the mayor and the service director on hiring good people that know what they're doing, we've got even young, new people out there doing what I think this council and this community expects us to do. The third, which would be one of those thirty-seven incidents, Patrolman Tom King, who's my most senior patrolman, he's been with us for a few years. He was presented a case from a local business, again, I'm going to leave names out of this, with about a ten-thousand-dollar lottery theft. He was able to quickly identify a suspect out of that, brought that person in, and now we have a case to present to the prosecutor in that situation. He was able to obtain from the reports, standing a confession in that, and so we do believe that we'll be able to seek justice. But I just kind of wanted to highlight those things. And I also brought with me these bags, these were purchased with some leftover towards the end of the year, safety and supplies money that we were able to get. Doesn't look like a lot, it's pretty expensive. What this is, is a medical trauma kit. This is for more serious stuff, this isn't for cuts, bumps, and bruises, and cold packs. This is for knife wounds, gunshot wounds, this is some very life-saving stuff. And the reason I brought this to show you was, we want to thank you for enabling us to do that. The mayor and the service director have been great since I've taken over, very supportive, we communicate a lot. I think they like the direction this is going, I like the direction this has been going. But this is beneficial, today's a dangerous world, this may save one of my officers... This may save one of my officers' lives someday, may save somebody in the public someday with some, we're actually, this stuff, some of this stuff's, it's not too complicated, but it's complicated enough that we need to have a little bit of a training so that everybody knows how to use this stuff. But we got enough. There should be one in every cruiser and one here on the station, things that we can take as we ramp things up a little bit and become more multi-dimensional, as I've, as I've kind of talked to you guys about before. We'd like to become a little bit more multi-dimensional. We'd like to get back to investigations and be a little bit more proactive with some drug activity. And so we wanted to thank you, and I want to show you what, you know, some of what that public money's been going to, and that's, that's to help the officers and make sure that we're safe. It also is a big liability reducer for us, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Biggs.
Would you say meth is the drug of choice right now, the most common?
It's a split, meth and fentanyl. Sometimes they combine them, which creates, we're still narcaning some people, which shows that there's still a great deal of opiate abuse. Meth is carried heavily by a small percentage of people walking the streets. It's not as hard to find. It's about as common to find as marijuana was when I started 20-plus years ago.
Is it made locally, or are they bringing it in?
No, it's not made locally. Most of what we encounter is imported from another country. It doesn't really come with a whole lot of labels and stamps on it, but it's called Mexican ice on the street a lot, and we used to deal with these meth labs years ago. Everybody talks, oh, they're making meth, they're making meth. The meth is, has, the meth in this country has been flooded from other countries so much that it's cheaper than making your own anymore. And because it's cheap, and because it's, it's very prevalent. So we've gotten away from finding these people who are manufacturing. I'm not saying nobody manufactures, but we don't see the manufacturing like we did a decade ago. What we see is a lot of the same salt-like-looking substance, and it's, it can be used and abused in a lot of different ways. So I want to educate the public on how to use and abuse that, but it is something that we try to combat. It is, drugs are the precursor to the thefts, the burglaries, et cetera. And those are what victimize a lot of great people in town who are just trying to raise a family, have, you know, have a business and earn a living, make a good life for themselves and their family, and that's who we want to protect. So we're trying to ramp some things up there. I am learnerly on in this. I can't, I can't change that all and ramp that up in three weeks. Some of this stuff is a slower plan, but we are moving in a forward direction, and I'm proud of where we've gotten so far, so.
Thank you.
Before the chief steps away there, I don't know how many of you noticed the night of the fireworks and stuff, that we probably had some cruisers running around. I knew the chief and his guys took 20 minutes to have a stolen vehicle back to its rightful owner, but that, give them a little bit of rundown of that chase. This is only in a 20-minute time period.
While the fireworks were going off, just as they were getting ready to go off, we had a person who had pulled into Speedway to use the restroom, get out of their vehicle, somebody hopped in the vehicle and took it. Thankfully, with technology, their cellphone was in there, find my iPhone. Again, it was Sergeant Witt. Sergeant Witt's was pretty good, and he's pretty lucky to get on all these incidents. He did exactly what a, what a sergeant needs to do, which is go and verify this thing's stolen. He went, he got with the victim, he got up-to-date information. I was out that night, too. I thought there was a really good chance with the intel we were getting that I was going to intercept it on Mayhew Road, but the vehicle left Speedway, went out, just go west, all the way to Cove Road, back in, came in 1:39, hit Mayhew Road, Mayhew to 93 South, and went to the, I think it's still called, maybe the Dunaway Speedway, down off 93, off to the right. I had enough officers out that night, because we had called a few extra out for the festivities, so we were running all over the county, but they were actually able to intercept the person who stole the vehicle in the vehicle at the time, get the vehicle back to the owner, little bit of damage, not from us, from, from the person trying to get away from us, and got that person in custody, too. So we're, we're out there doing a lot of things, and we don't, we don't really like to draw a lot of attention, but I think sometimes we need to draw a little bit of attention so that people know what we are actually dealing with, so. Any other questions?
While we're on Sergeant Witt, there was a very nice article in the paper recently that hadn't been mentioned at council about him receiving the most helpful officer or something like that from the coalition that helps victims?
He was the CAPS award, he's the CAPS award recipient this year, and we usually present that at our December Christmas party, where we've not, we've not planned one for this year. But, yeah, he was the, he was the recipient of that. That's, that's an award that's voted on by domestic violence victims, and so he was voted the most helpful officer from Jackson Police Department, and it should be recognized as well. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Anything else for Chief Hinch?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much for what you do. Next on our agenda is Mr. Reed.
There's three ordinances or cleanup ordinances in tonight's packet, one dealing with cares money, one dealing with freedom, and one needed a little bit more money in workers' comp. So those, if we can get those fast tonight, I appreciate it, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Next, Mr. Kirby?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Next, Mayor?
Quick project update. The, we met last week internally with our leadership. I just update you, the ODOT projects, which are numerous for next year, we're planning the prep work for them and trying to make a checkoff list of what all we need to get prepared for them. Also, I wanted you to know that, of course, Tracy's, Tracy's been involved in this. We have, you've heard us talk about the ARPA funds, American Recovery Plan funds that the city got. We also have applied to the county commissioners for, to try and get a share of their ARPA funds, because one of the most eligible, easily identifiable projects for that, for acceptable use of that money is water and sewer projects, of which we have many and of which the county has, has very few. So we're hoping we get some help from the county commissioners, get a share of their ARPA funds. And then also, just this past week, we made another formal inquiry to Lick Township, for maybe we can get a share of their ARPA funds for, and we identified a project for them also that would serve Lick Township. Actually, the city provides sewer service to a pretty good, large tract of Lick Township out there in what's commonly known as McKittrick Heights, it's not in the city. And the, the main line bringing that sewer back into town is in bad need of repairs. It's one of the projects we have identified, so we're hoping maybe we'll get some help from them with part of their ARPA money. So that's kind of an update on the projects. I also just wanted to give a few more thanks and kudos to a couple of holiday and Christmas-type celebrations that were the week before last. I know some of you were there, but on December 2nd, there was a very nice, I think they call it Christmas cheer or whatever, at the Mayhew Brown Funeral Home sponsors. I brought a lot of people into town. We had, all evening long, we had the middle school and high school choir singing on the steps of the memorial building, right out in front of our office there. We left work to carol, it was up front, kids singing. And then two nights later was, was, was our celebration for Christmas. Started out with the parade that the Jackson Gear Grinders helped organize, had a nice parade, a huge crowd that evening, it was a nice evening, huge crowd. It almost felt like a Wednesday night Apple Festival parade, the crowd was so big. Then, following that, we had the, several events out at the park that was, including the lighting of the Christmas trees out there, which was organized by Cultivating Our Future. I couldn't think of it. Cultivating Our Future in Barbie MacArthur leads that up, and then followed by the fireworks for the second year in a row. I think it was Ryan Peters who suggested the fireworks last year, after we had canceled them on the 4th, and it was so well-received, we decided to try it again, and the Jackson Firefighters Association jumped in to help sponsor that and help provide funds for that. And it was, it was, it was a big night in Jackson, and I've not heard anything but good comments about it. So it made you all look good on council, to have a nice, big event in Jackson like that. So I think we're going to have to continue. The way it looks, the way it's going, we're going to have to keep doing that. So, and then that's, I got a couple of other things that I want to talk about when we get there later in the meeting, but that's all I have for now.
You want to talk about the EDA funding?
I don't know a lot about it. We're in the early stages of applying for EDA funding, service director just mentioned, and that's federal money. And it's a very lengthy, difficult process, but Tracy's been on it, and we're figuring out how to do it. We hope to get some money there for actually a couple of our projects, help fill in the gaps. There's just never enough money to go around, and we are constantly looking for new sources to try to tap, and David and Tracy are a big part of that. Good enough?
I'll expand.
Okay, so I'll let David expand.
Any questions for the mayor for his report? Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So, the service director, Mr. Swackhammer?
Yeah, a couple of last-minute items. This evening, there is a water line break on Burlington. Part of that road is now being shut down, I understand. The water line break is big enough that the, actually, it's hooved up some of the blacktops, what I've heard, so. Yet, I guess, anybody that's listening, if Burlington's your normal way to and from, please be aware that there may be some partial closures, maybe some full closures if we got some repairs going on out there. Also, this weekend was not very kind to many of our Christmas trees that were beautifully decorated and lit down in Manpower Park. So if you have a Christmas tree down there, you know, it is probably in need of attention if you haven't already done so, please consider going down there and making those adjustments. Last thing, we want to see somebody get injured because of broken bulbs, hooks, and so forth that may have blown off down there, so I would ask people to take a look at those in that situation down there. The EDA funding that the mayor mentioned, one of the big projects that we had ahead of us was the South Street Water Line Project, which includes laterals running from Main Street down to David Avenue. This line is one-third of the city's main three lines, that is for the loop system. And so we have went after the funding for it through this EDA, as well some additional funding to help us finish the sewer lining project that's already on the books. We're going after $2.5 million in grants for this project, and we've put a lot of legwork into getting all the information that's being requested for that, and as the mayor mentioned, Tracy has been networking with a lot of local and even regional contacts to try to help us get this money and stuff. So there's a lot of big project works that we're trying to get, not only the ones we've achieved so far, but we want to fill that pipeline up with grant money and good projects that are needed by the city. Some of the other items I want to talk about, in your packet, you're going to see a Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. This grant opens up early next year. This is for the police department, and they're wanting to apply for a grant here for a side-by-side. This would be an official vehicle. It would be labeled as such for them to use to patrol in some of the, I'll say, non-city street areas and stuff, but this would cover the cost of that vehicle that they want to apply for. It was either Lawrence or Sider County, one or the other, that was officially able to get something like that recently, so. So that's in your packet. I don't think it is, David. Didn't have it in the packet? Okay, I'll leave it here if anyone wants to see it, but I know the, the ordinances in there, but, okay. Also, Monroe County finally came back around and has offered us another contract for next year. Ours ends at the end of this month. We do not use Monroe County unless we absolutely need to because of the distance. It's the furthest one away. This, and they also, they've raised their rates from $65 to $75 per night for each inmate. But again, this is our backup to a backup, and our contract will expire in short notice, but again, they just offered it to us on December the 2nd. Next item, I want to ask the, let's see, the Planning Commission, I'd like for them to schedule a meeting sometime in early January to look at some of the zoning, excuse me, some of the ordinances and the zoning regulations in regards to home sizes, as well as conversions, and some of the other items associated, minimum square footage associated with some of these conversions, that we're starting to see some interest in, in these yard barn conversions. We don't think that that is really what we want to see in our residential areas, but it takes the Planning Committee really to make that decision, and I'd like the opportunity to meet with that committee if we can pull that committee together.
Ms. Biggs?
When you pull that committee together, before something's definitely decided, will you have a public meeting? Because people in neighborhoods might have a very strong opinion.
Well, I think, yeah, the Planning Committee would need to announce that and make it open to the public with what the topic is, so that that could be discussed. I'd like to get the holidays out of the way and make it sometime in, in January. If you just work with, with sending, and when, once a date's selected, to put the, it out to the public, so they know what the topic is and so forth. And I can help you with the verbiage on that, once it's all decided. The last item, the budget. I want to talk about it briefly. I wasn't here the last time with the special reading on 2nd. There were some questions, I understand, but mainly, we have gotten a lot of information that came in, in the last couple of weeks. Our new ARPA funds for next year came in at a tune of $326,299.55, so that's a budget increase. And then there was some other line items. For some reason, the sewer fund had some screw-ups in it, and I'll take the blame for it, but there was, like in the utilities, a line item, I don't know how it got off, but it did. It said $1,500, and it should have been $425,000. So that's huge numbers, and that's why I sent all this, the separate email to everyone on council and asking, because all these items would have to come back to council if one off. We've got the time. I'd like for you to take a look at it. If you will adopt the new one, kick it back to the second reading, still take a couple more weeks to look at it, and then you can look at it on the 27th for a third reading if you get all your questions answered. answered. And that would still give us plenty of time to, uh, take care of everything. I've already talked to Mr. Reed about that. But, uh, any, I got some other numbers here. If you want to talk about specifics and stuff, uh, I can do a little bit more detail. But, uh, I just felt it was too important to try to make this change and move it on through. I'd rather let you guys adopt it, kick it back for a reading, take your time to look at it, bring your questions to me, and give me the opportunity to answer those.
What was the code number for the 400,000?
Uh, let me get it here for you. It is 7-11, 7-25, 53-003. It was in there for 1,500. It, it was, it got switched with something else, totally my fa, uh, error. And it should have read 425,000. Uh, so that one was all on May. I got it mixed, mixed up with something else somehow. And, um, and then the one for the ARPA, uh, Dan is under, uh,
I know it. I saw it.
Okay.
I'm having, I'm having trouble finding that 400,000 though.
Uh, it was,
I'm looking on your line, your short version here.
Uh, well, it's tied into all the 7-11 numbers. You know, I go see it as a standalone item in your object. I'll be glad to,
I'll get it later. It's all right.
All right. That's all I have.
Questions for Mr. Swakhammer? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Swakhammer. We'll move on to,
Oh, yeah, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Call.
We've, uh, since we met the other night, uh, we've increased the budget by 934,000 dollars.
Yep. And, uh, over 800,000, uh, was in those two line items I've just mentioned.
Okay. Thank you.
Other, other questions? Hearing none, then we'll move on to our ordinance and resolution there. We will start on ordinance of second reading. We'll start with ordinance 6821. Uh, Ms. Coon?
An ordinance approving and adopting a garbage utility cash reserve policy, including the calculation method to determine the minimum cash reserve.
Discussion? Any further action to be taken on, uh, ordinance 6821? Hearing none, this constitutes the second reading of ordinance 6821. Next, ordinance 6921. Ms. Coon?
An ordinance approving and adopting a sewer utility cash reserve policy, including the calculation method to determine the minimum cash reserve.
Discussion? Any further action to be taken on, uh, 6921? Hearing none, this constitutes the second reading of ordinance 6921. Next, ordinance 7021. Ms. Coon?
An ordinance approving and adopting a water utility cash reserve policy, including the calculation method to determine the minimum cash reserve.
Discussion? Hearing none, any further action to be taken on ordinance 7021? This constitutes the second reading of ordinance 7021. Next is ordinance of 7121. Uh, Ms. Coon? Oh, one second. Let's back up. Ordinance 7121, what we are doing is we were, we are looking for a motion, uh, to amend the previous ordinance that we went through on second reading. This will show the numbers that, uh, Mr. Swakhammer, uh, brought to us tonight. So I am asking for a motion to amend, uh, the ordinance 7121, and we will take it back to second reading. Is there a motion for that?
Yeah, I, I move to, uh, accept the amended, uh, numbers, um, that Mr. Swakhammer presented to us tonight.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Call, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. So let us go into, uh, Ms. Coon reading here, if she would.
An ordinance establishing appropriations for the year 2022, beginning January 1st, 2022, and through December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Discussion on the amended motion. No, or sorry, the amended ordinance. Any further action to be taken on ordinance 7121? Hearing none, this constitutes the second reading of ordinance 7121. Next, we have ordinance 72?
71.
7521, I'm sorry. Yes, 7521.
An ordinance approving additional appropriations in the local coronavirus relief fund and declaring an emergency.
Is there, uh, a motion to adopt ordinance 7521 as presented to council?
This one you need to pass, Brett.
Hold on one second. Is there a motion to accept?
Sure.
Mr. Peters, is there a second? Uh, Ms. Colby, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion is carried. Um, discussion, Mr. Call.
I move to suspend the rules, pass the ordinance.
Uh, motion by Mr. Call to suspend the rules for an emergency. Is there a second, Ms. Biggs? Call, call?
Foster.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Biggs.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Discussion?
Dan.
Yes, sir.
Just to explain a little bit, what this is, is cares money that has to be either spent or returned by the end of this year. And what happened with it, it was in a, uh, PO last year, and the person that had the PO didn't spend the whole PO. We didn't know that they didn't. We caught that we had 134 dollars and 60 cents sitting that we have to be able to return. So it has to be appropriated so we can spend it or send it back. So we will spend it as soon as we can get it appropriated.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any further discussion? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Biggs.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Ordinance 7521 is duly adopted. Next, we will go to ordinance 7621. Uh, Ms. Coon?
An ordinance approving additional appropriations in the city income tax fund, administrative expenses, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance 7621 as per, uh, presented to council this evening? Ms. Biggs, is there a second? Mr. Newkirk, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion is carried. Discussion, Mr. Reed.
Okay. As far as this, the, uh, I guess this is one of the things when your income tax does very, very well. Uh, we're over, we have collected over 2.3 million to this point. So this will finish out the year and let us book it, uh, with the expenses and with the revenue. So this is what we need to finish out the year.
Who are we paying this to?
Actually, what it is, what the, what Rita does, they take the, they don't ever give it to us, but we have to book it. So we book the gross. In other words, if they collect 100,000 dollars and they kept 3,000 for administrative, we only get the 97. But we have to book it as 100,000 dollars minus expenses. So that's what we're doing is a paper trail of booking the costs.
So that's their fee, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Peters?
Not that it really matters, but what's the total admin fee to date? This, they have run this year with the chargeback, which was what they paid us extra of about 9,000 dollars on the last one, a 3% is what they've averaged. Okay?
Other comments? Ms. Biggs?
So you need us to pass this?
Yes, we need this to be able to,
I move to suspend the rules in order to pay this.
Motion by Mrs. Biggs to suspend the rules. Is there a second? Ms. Colby, seconds? Discussion? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Biggs.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Further discussion? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Biggs.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Ordinance 7621 is duly adopted. Next, on our agenda is ordinance, uh, 7721. Uh, Ms. Coon?
An ordinance repealing and amending the City of Jackson's codified ordinance section 557.01 governing weed control.
Can I have a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance 7721 as presented to council?
Certainly.
Mr. Peters, is there a second? Ms. Biggs, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Uh, discussion, Mr. Swakhammer?
Uh, yes. Uh, this came out of a request from, uh, Mr. Lewis, our code enforcement officer. Uh, one of the items that he went through this summer, of course, is our current ordinances are mowing four times a year based upon date. Uh, grass doesn't grow by dates. Grass goes by, by the weather conditions and other things. Also, he noticed that, uh, our ordinances did not state anything around the, the trimming. Uh, and a lot of the items that he was addressing was the yard may be mowed, but nothing trimmed. And you had high weeds along fences, along houses, uh, that, uh, didn't meet what our expectations would have been and stuff. So rather than doing it by date, uh, his suggestion, uh, was to do it by a height, uh, requirement. And that way you take, the date ranges totally out of it. Um, so the, the, uh, the height that you can see that they put in here was a maximum height of 12 inches. I doubt if there's very many lawns out there that are being kept as lawns that have a height of 12 inches or more. But, uh, more importantly, I think is the section around the trimming as well. What this also does is, uh, allow for a quicker turnaround of addressing. If we were doing it on a four times a year time, we would go out, check to see if somebody had or had not. Then you go back and, uh, you, you send out the letters and time all this all happens, you almost a month has waited, uh, passed and you're to the next time. So now it can be addressed as they occur, quicker turnaround, resolved, and you don't have to wait on certain dates. And if you get a dry spell, no big issues there, taken care of. If you have a very wet season though, you can't wait a month. You're gonna have grass a lot taller than this. So we're asking for this to be a much easier way to manage the whole process and also, um, not have it dependent upon date ranges only.
Thank you, Mr. Swakhammer?
Mr. President.
Mr. Peters?
Previously in discussions, I don't know, a year or so ago, when this topic came up, there's a couple of places in the first ward that are bush hogged. So that's gonna change those properties because when I was asked about it the last time, um, the, the ordinance said that it had to be cut during those dates, but it, there was no length of grass at that time. So my question is, is, there's a couple of big pieces of property, uh, between Burlington Road and Gay Street, on Huron Street, and then where, uh, Burlington Road between South and Huron Street, where some of those areas are bush hogged. Um, so that's takes a whole different approach to those properties. Um, are we, obviously we're gonna have to hold those folks accountable as well, where they're gonna have to probably finish mow those properties to, I mean, you're,
Uh, Mr. Peters, I believe the one on Burlington, I've seen them bail that one before, correct? And stuff, and,
It was brought to my attention for the length of the grass.
Yeah.
Because,
And that's why the last sentence had been put in there. If a crop is being produced or the land is being managed in a way to prevent high weeds and rank vegetation. I know that that was, uh, originally set up for the agriculture. I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, if, if what you're saying is true, maybe that should be expanded for other such areas other than just agricultural. If, uh, I'm, I'm open to suggestions there. Uh, if there's verbiage, it's better, that we, uh, wanna get some more input. I mean, this is first reading only.
Mr. President, I, not that I have any better, uh, verbiage or wording there, I just want to make sure that it's able to be enforced there as it would be, you know, Joe Schmo who lives on Bennett Avenue. Couple other places too, if you go out, once again, in the first ward where, uh, the plastic plant is, uh, there's a, an older building there where they, they don't, they don't, they're not gonna meet this. They're, so I just, we'd say you're probably gonna have to be prepared to, to go, to go knock on doors or send letters to some of those folks. And they may or may not be living in the city.
Yeah. To, this is the ideal time to have these conversations. And if we need to make some adjustments or amendments to it, uh, we're open. We just wanted to start the process.
Understand.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs.
I love this and I agree with this. I think when you get the verbiage worked out, however, because, you know, we obviously need to tweak it somewhat. But I think in there then needs to say some, somehow, if approved by the Service Director, that it can be fit under this category, whatever, however worded we do. But I think otherwise, everyone's just gonna say, oh, it goes back to this. I mean, they're gonna have to get it approved, whoever owns the property, that it falls under whatever we decide it is.
Further discussion? Uh, further action to be taken on, uh, ordinance 7721. Hearing none, uh, this constitutes the first reading of ordinance 7721. Next is ordinance 7821. Ms. Coon?
An ordinance creating the positions of maintenance mechanic two and chief maintenance mechanic and establishing salary and declaring an emergency.
Can I get a motion to adopt ordinance 7821 as presented to council this evening?
Certainly.
Ms. Biggs, is there a second? Uh, Mr. Newkirk, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Um, motion carried. Discussion, Mr. Swakhammer?
Actually, go give it to the mayor.
Uh, what we're trying to do here is, um, in our city mechanic, uh, it doesn't list what it pays. Our city mechanic currently pays 2139. And that happens to be the exact same as our janitor. That also happens to be, um, 16 cents higher than several positions we have in the city, uh, such as an administrative secretary, a, a garbage loader, uh, a meter reader, the utility office, uh, or skilled labor in any department. Um, by comparison, uh, a tree trimmer makes over two bucks an hour more than mechanic, um, for example. And we don't really think it's fair, frankly. Um, and, you know, uh, we're trying to prevent our mechanic from bidding to one of these other jobs that pays just as much, but is a lot easier in, in many ways. Um, so we got to looking at the contract and at our water plant and our sewer plant, we have, um, plant repairmen positions, which are kinda mechanical in nature too. Um, and they, in, in each of those positions, they can become a plant repairman, uh, I forget how it's listed, two and three or, or after, after they've been there so long, they can move up to two, two higher pay scales by doing that same job. Whereas our mechanic in our garage works on all of our city vehicles and equipment. Uh, mechanics are getting harder and harder to find. It's getting very technical and very electronic. Um, so, but there's just that one position at that one pay and there's nowhere to go. So what these positions are is a mechanic two and a chief mechanic. Whereas if someone is in that position and the job description described this, uh, with so many years of experience, um, or so many years of experience with the city even, um, we can move up to, to one of these two positions to, uh, to, to get a little higher pay and pay scale. Um, to where actually these numbers we lined are exactly what the second and third step, uh, pays for our plant repairment at, at the water plant. So, um, that's the gist of it. Be happy to answer any questions, but we just think that mechanic who's been there for, you know, several years is, is not in for, you know, several years is not in a fair pay scale in relation to other city jobs.
Ms. Biggs?
So we've got a mechanic, and then you're going to move him up because he does a good job, we want to keep him there. So you put him mechanic two or chief mechanic, whichever, Howard. Then do we hire somebody else for that lower one that he had?
Well, right now, we have two positions. We also have a superintendent there. That is a working superintendent. So we have two people there, and our plan is to always have two people there.
Okay. So it wouldn't increase the number of people?
No, we're not planning on increasing the number of people. We're just, we're just planning that if we have a person there that's been there a number of years and knows all the city equipment and what we need, he could step up to a higher pay scale, such as if he was a plant repairman at the water plant.
Mr. Peters?
Just two questions. So you're staying in line with the step raises in another department is where you arrived at?
That's where, yeah. That's the same as a plant repairman at the water plant.
Okay. And then the other question is, I vaguely remember reading the contract where, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm asking, I don't know the answer to this, where there were, like, a stipend was paid to the mechanic for, I'm not sure what the acronym is for their licensing, but wasn't there a lump sum paid for holding that certification? Is that still in the contract, or?
There used to be a large payment for that. I think it was like five thousand dollars if you met certain of those ASTM, whatever it is, requirements. Those were removed a couple of contracts ago.
They get nothing?
They get none of that now.
Okay.
Nope. This would make up part of that. You know, or could make up part of that. But what it is, that's, that kind of certification has somewhat went by the wayside and don't really apply to us either. A lot of that training becomes brand specific now. You know, if you're, if you're in a Ford plant or a Ford dealership, you're only learning Ford stuff, and all electronics is just for that. Whereas we're very broad in the city. I mean, this mechanic's got to know a little bit about every brand. We've got every brand they make, you know, between trucks and equipment. And so that doesn't apply so much here as it really is on-the-job training does, or outside training, but to our equipment, to our various equipment. We've got a wide range of stuff. And, you know, and this is not to, this is not for one person. I think this is fair for any mechanic we might have in the future, where, you know, I think that a trained mechanic that's experienced on our equipment should be making more than these other positions I listed. That's, especially today, these days. That's, that's what we're trying to do here.
Further discussion?
I think we need to bring counsel up to speed, too, with our conversation with the union. And I'm going to ask Tanya if she'll step up to the mic and as our HR manager.
Good evening. So we met with two of the union representatives for the AFSMI union with copies of the two new job descriptions. And the main focus of jumping on these two job descriptions was because we do have an employee who wants to move out of his position because of the chance of moving up financially isn't there. The mechanic two position, the chief mechanic position, both of those descriptions align with the class one, class two repair maintenance for both the wastewater and the water treatment facilities. And after our meeting with the two gentlemen for the AFSMI local representatives, they chose to not agree to those rates of pay. They did agree that the positions were needed, that something needs to be done about the rate, but they declined to participate in moving forward with this. So that's why we're bringing it to you, to get the wage schedule approved and move forward since we do have some anticipated openings in the near future, in both the mechanics position and some 2022 retirements.
Biggs?
Do you need this passed tonight because of talk? No.
No.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tanya? That counsel may have? Thank you. Further discussion on ordinance seventy-eight twenty-one? Any further action on ordinance seventy-eight twenty-one? Hearing none. This constitutes the first reading of ordinance seventy-eight twenty-one. Next, we'll move on to ordinance seventy-nine twenty-one. Ms. Coon?
An ordinance to move appropriations from Law Director Legal Services to Law Director Workers' Compensation Fund and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance seventy-nine twenty-one as presented to council this evening? Mr. Bob, is there a second? Ms. Biggs? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Discussion, Mr. Reed?
This is a payment. The last couple of years, we've actually got a lot more back from, with the COVID. Workers' Comp has given us tremendous amount of checks back. We don't understand it, but that's a good thing. And in the Law Directors Fund this year, there was not money put for this. So when we went to look at it at the end of the year, we usually get a bill in December for it. We got to looking through it, and there was not money in Mr. Kirby's budget for it. So what we're doing, we're not appropriating additional money, we're just taking it from one line item and moving it to another so that we can pay the workers' comp for the year. So that's what I'm asking, if the council would approve this, and then we'll be able to go ahead and pay the workers' comp claim for money out.
Discussion?
This need emergency passing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Carr, are you making that motion?
Yes.
Just to send the rules. Thank you, Mr. Roll. Is there a second? Mr. Foster? All those in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, whoa, I'm sorry. I've already said that, I jumped again. Ms. Coon?
Foster. Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion by council? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion by council? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion by counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion by council? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion by counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion by counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion by counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion by counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion by counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion by counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? By counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? By counsel? Mr. Peters? Is there a second? Mr. Foster? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion is carried. Mr. Swackhammer?
Yeah, this was an invoice that was received before we had the PO open. This is for the fact finder that gave us the report versus the city versus the Teamsters Union. And so just a little, I'll sequence, just asking for the dinner now to pay the invoice.
Other discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Peters?
I move to suspend the rules to pay this gentleman for what he has already billed us for.
Question by Mr. Peters, second by Mr. Bob? Discussion? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion by counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? By counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? By counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Further discussion? By counsel? Ms. Coon?
Foster.
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Colby?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Newkirk?
Yes.
Biggs?
Yes.[1401.12]
I move to change the resolution title to read Jackson Police Department, Striking Fire. After Police Department is going to be filing for the grant, I want to make sure we are giving permission to the right department.
So the motion on the floor is for resolution fifty-two twenty-one to amend that to read with the police department instead of fire, correct?
Yeah, and I don't see it listed anywhere else in here where it would say Fire Department. So only in the heading?
Is there, oh, one moment, one moment. Is there a second to the motion, and then we'll have discussion? Mr. Foster, second, to amend the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Ms. Biggs.
Well, is this application funded, I mean, is it officially Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation?
Yes.
Well, then we shouldn't change it.
But it says to be used by the.
I think, I think where it's Firehouse Subs when this was written, then they put in Fire Department.
Pardon?
I think, I think they put in Fire Department, used by the Jackson Fire Department.
Yeah.
I think they put that, which is confusion with the Firehouse Subs, Firehouse Subs is the company that's putting these.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought that's the.
I just want to make sure they get the right, the right vehicle gets to the right place.
Okay, no problem. Never mind.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Any other, any other discussion? Mr. Peters?
Yeah, I move that we suspend the rules to adopt the amended resolution.
Motion by Mr. Peters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newkirk. Other discussion?
Foster.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Biggs.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Further discussion? Ms. Kuhn?
Foster.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Biggs.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Resolution fifty-two twenty-one is duly adopted. Next on our agenda is resolution fifty-three twenty-one. Ms. Kuhn?
A resolution authorizing the Mayor of the City of Jackson to apply for, accept, and enter into an agreement with the U.S. Economic Development Administration, EDA, on behalf of the City of Jackson for the Water and Wastewater Main Line Improvements Project and designating a dedicated repayment source for the match and declaring an emergency.
Could I have a motion to adopt resolution fifty-three twenty-one as presented to council? Mr. Peters? Second by Ms. Biggs. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? The motion is carried. Discussion. Mr. Swackhammer.
Uh, yes, if you'll notice in part of what the court read, it talked about a match in there. In the 2022 budget, one of the projects that we had in there was for the sewer lining project where we had ARC money of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, still had a six-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we were going to have to fund. Our match, if we get this EDA, will be less than that six-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we would be needing to pay that as our percentage of the match. So we would actually get both projects done and reduce the amount of money that would be outlaid by the city as part of our match on that.
Further discussion, Ms. Biggs?
This needs approval tonight to get on.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to suspend the rules in order to pass this in a timely manner.
Motion by Ms., Ms. Biggs. Second by Mr. Newkirk. Further discussion? Ms. Kuhn?
Foster.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Biggs.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Discussion. Ms. Kuhn?
Foster.
Yes.
Call.
Yeah.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Biggs.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Resolution fifty-three twenty-one is duly adopted. Thank you, council. Next on our agenda was correspondence. Mayor, did you have something you wanted to bring forward in the correspondence?
Uh, yes. I had emailed it to all of you. The, I wanted to make sure you got it, because I know, I've been told not all of you get email, and we wanted to make sure it got public, is a letter of resignation from Ms. Biggs, from, from city council. That will be effective December thirty-first. And we hate to see her go. But she has officially turned in her resignation.
I echo those sentiments.
I want to appreciate, I want to say how much I appreciate all the support this council, Mr. Swackhammer, Mr. Evans, have given me and the public. They've been really great. And since it's kind of been known I've been moving, um, I've had a lot, not a lot, but several people call and say, can't you finish it? And I'm going, no, not after, you know, when I'm officially out, I'm out. One thing I would like to say, I'm thrilled because I hear there's four or five people interested in possibly filling my position. And I think that's so wonderful that people are starting to get involved because it's showing, well, to me, it shows two things. First, people are taking seriously, the more people involved, the stronger your government will be, whether it be just local, whether it be state or national. The more involved you get, the stronger that the whole organization will be. And second, it also says, you know, everyone likes to be on a winning team. And so we must, this council and the mayor and service director and everybody who's working for the city, the police department, everyone, I think it's, it's turning and it's going in a good direction. And I think that's why people are stepping up to the plate. You like to be on a winning team. I just have one piece of advice for this council, the mayor, the service director, and anyone who sits in this seat. Don't take to heart a few people that put on things that often are not true. It's hurtful, you know, it bothers you. But my suggestion is, don't get on there and read that stuff on Facebook and those places. You know, what good does it do? You're not, you, you, it would just feed the fire if you address them, so you don't. The best thing to do, in my opinion, what I'm leaving you with, all of you, don't read it. And it also, when people don't read hurtful things, untrue things, I think Ms. Colby and I have been picked out enough between the two of us to know this, how untrue there were. But when you read it, it gives people power. And if you don't, it takes away the power. And so my suggestion to all of you is, don't read it.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Ms. Kuhn, any other correspondence that you might, oh, Mr. Call.
I think, now, I got this by UPS, I believe. It's addressed to me at large. It's from AEP Ohio. Are you Randy or David? What is this is to do with transmission project in, in our area where they wanting to move a couple wood poles and replace them with steel. Are you?
Yeah, we've got that, all the council members got it. We made a copy and put it in all the department heads' boxes, so. And you probably saw one maybe from Columbia Gas as well. Just utility work that's going to be done here in 2022 outside the city's scope. But they're just letting us be aware.
Is, this was attached. Is there anything on that?
Nothing that is of any value to anyone else, as it's part of the communication.
Okay, you, you've got whatever I've got.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Old business to be brought before the council? Anyone have any old business?
I just have one question.
Mr. Peters?
Could be asked outside of this meeting, but I noticed that we cleaned out the drainage in front of the Comfort Inn, whatever it's called, but we didn't do the other side. And someone said it's private property, but there's a sewer line or a water line or something going through there. And also the bridge bounces out about sixteen or twenty feet. Is there any plans to clean the other side of the bridge there on Main Street out, or are you done?
The area that you're referring to there is something that the city had done in the past on an annual basis. And that was the extent of what the city's done. That was the redirection of a creek when that establishment was put in there. And we can, we can do that without actually getting down, we can do it from the street. We don't have to do it, but the area you're talking about, you just can't get to it. You're talking about doing McDonald's and People's Bank?
Yeah, but right at the edge of the bridge, though. I mean, I've got pictures of it. I take a picture of it because it gets higher and higher as the months go by.
You're also talking about the bridge in bad shape, the edge.
Yeah, uh, the bridge will be addressed, supposedly, I'm going to knock on wood, by ODOT. The mayor's shaking, he said, yeah, because with the ninety-three paving project, both of those bridges are supposed to be addressed by ODOT, by their standards and not by the city. So we hope that comes to fruition. Ryan, I have not forgotten about your request to clean that out.
It looks great, but the water just stops, right?
Under. I understand. Yep, we got something that we need to address there. It's how to do it. We just can't allow ourselves to get equipment so close to where we could have any type of oil or anything else get into the, the water stream. The stuff that we cleaned out, we keep all of our equipment well enough away and stuff that we wouldn't have that issue or be able to handle it. When you get over that close, it becomes a different issue.
Other old business to be brought before council? Mr. Newkirk?
Cemetery. Are you working on drains up there? I was up, up through there.
Yeah. If you remember, a month or so ago, we had a, a group of folks that came in and spoke. And the one lady that was very upset about her, her parents and stuff, and I asked her to be patient. I'd had the conversation with her back in the spring. Already on our agenda, we'd already ordered supplies. That is the corner that is being addressed up there. We've made one street cut so far up there, put in two catch basins. Is that correct, Mayor? Put in two catch basins, and we'll probably yet put in several feet of French drain to catch water coming off there. We had to clean out some of the lines coming down through there. We wanted to jet them out to make sure they were fully operational and, and stuff. So we will finish that repair. We will finish the backfill on, associated on that street cut, and if we have to do another one, so that those can settle prior to next year's paving project up there. As stated during that meeting and prior, we are on schedule doing what we planned to do several months ago in the cemetery around that scenario and the, the street paving up there.
Thank you, Mr. Swackhammer. Any other old business?
Uh, yes.
Yes, Mr. Call.
On the border control minutes from Mr. Reed, we've got eleven thousand, eighty-one thousand dollars payable to Bureau of Workers' Comp. Is that for half year?
That's this year's, yes. And that's what we're paying right now as far as for moving monies around. They gave us, we have had no guidance on, from them, really. We got back, two years ago, I believe, it was three-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Which, I, you don't have any, so what we're doing now is just making the payments that we've got. We had the money set aside for Bureau of Workers' Comp this year in all funds, but Mr. Kirby's didn't have it in it.
Okay, so this is for the whole year then?
Yes, we'll finish the year up.
And we've got various different rates for clerical and mechanic.
Yes, they've got different rates.
Just like everybody else in the world.
Different classifications for all different departments.
Thank you.
Anyone else in old, uh, old business? Mr. Mayor?
I have some very old business, right, Mr. Kirby? Back in, was it in the eighties, Mr. Kirby, or the nineties?
That's when, the eighties, eighty-nine, I think, is when the city acquired the railroad.
So back in eighty-nine, approximately eighty-nine, under previous Mayor Evans, the city bought a railroad company. And, and the reason they did, because the, they were getting ready to abandon it. And there were several users in the county, um, or, or at least on this rail that were, you know, were using and, and needing the rail service. And, you know, over the years, people have judged whether it was a good decision or not. I think it was. Still today, when we have economic development meetings, one of the key things they're looking for is, is rail access, still today. You know, rail travel almost seems antique to us, but it's still in demand by large industry. And as I work with Economic Development Partnership that, that we are a part of, that's, you know, through Jobs Ohio and whoever, it's still a, a big thing they're looking for. So I think it was a great thing the city did. But many, many years of, of, of struggle followed that, trying to find someone to operate it. And I know there was a lot of legal issues over the years, um, trying to, you know, work them. The city didn't run the railroad, they just owned it. And it's rail and property from Ross County and Benton County down in to Jackson and clear down through Oak Hill and all the way into Lawrence County. And, and, and we still own it. But back in about seventeen, I think, the previous administration and the previous council negotiated with the Ohio Rail Commission, which is a state agency that is there basically to help rail survive because it's very difficult for it to pay for itself, yet industry still wants it and uses it. So they nego, started negotiations, Joe, he's been around, he was probably involved in it, the Ohio Rail Commission to turn over the Jackson rail to the Ohio Rail Commission. Early last year, new mayor and new service director, we went to Columbus to meet with the Ohio Rail Commission, thinking we were going to sign that deal that day. But the wheels of government turn slowly. And here we are, five years later approximately, since the previous administration started this process. And today, I want council to know that today, as, as your mayor, I signed those deeds, turning the Jackson rail over to the Ohio Rail Commission. So within the next week or, or year or so, it's, it's, it's got to be filed yet. But that's actually, I think, Joe, back me up, it's going to happen now. And we're going to be out of the railroad business.
Mr. Foster said, so when it started back in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, council passed an ordinance in nineteen. The Ohio Rail Commission took a, a year or so to get permission from the state to, to acquire it. Then the problem was identifying it. So you'll be out of the railroad business, but there'll still be some railroad land that you may own that doesn't have rail on it. I, I can't tell you what exactly it is because there's no legal description. It's, it's a, an, I think there's seventy-one parcels in, in Jackson. So the mayor signed it today. I sent the conveyance forms to the rail commission, so they should send that back. And then somebody's going to have to hand, basically walk it to the four counties because the, the city owned real estate in Benton, Ross, Jackson, and Lawrence County. So, but somebody will have to go through and show all the auditor, but hopefully it'll be sooner than later, once we get that back.
So although I think that was a good decision the city made, I think ever since then, it's been a pain and I've been looking for a way to get out. But the rail survives. I think the rail commission will continue to try to find an operator. I think we currently have a pretty good operator running it.
They found him.
Yep. And so rail is still in these areas, and, and that's important. That's when it comes to economic development.
One other thing on the deeds of the rail commission, Ohio Rail Commission operates railroads in other, other parts of the state. So if they choose not to operate it, it's reversed back to the City of Jackson. The, the city and, and the city basically didn't pay for it, did purchase it, but they paid for it with grant money. And the problem is we don't have to repay any of the grant money when we get out, and then we can get back in as well if they, if they choose not to. But I, I think they've shown a commitment all over the state to operate the rails and it shouldn't be any issue.
Ms. Biggs?
The land we owe in other counties, do we just turn it back to them?
It, it's all going to the Ohio Rail Commission.
Even this land that you were talking about?
So in the, in the, in the other counties, we're pretty certain that they're getting all of that because there's actually a railroad on that.
Okay.
Um, I think the confusion here, and Bill Cole was way more familiar with it than I am, that there was a rail, I think there's two railroads. One of them was one that served Jackson and Wellston for transporting workers from the early nineteen hundreds. The other one was CSX, which operated basically a, a different line. So there's, those are kind of combined, so a lot of the old rail we would be keeping. Then some of the spurs, they, they rejected, but I don't know where the spurs are, but there's no rail on those. So that, that's what we'll be keeping, but everything in, in Ross County is gone, everything in.
Okay, so we don't have any property we have to get rid of in those?
Right, same with Benton County and the same with a little bit in Lawrence County.
Okay.
So basically, I just announced to make council aware of that old business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything else, old business? Hearing none. I don't believe we had anyone else besides Mr. Berry's in this evening to sign in to speak. We had him speak just early. So next we will move into new business. There's a couple of things just for you to know. We are publicly announcing the special meeting dates of December the twenty-eighth and December the twenty-ninth, which we are going to hold as possible meeting dates for budgetary that we do each year. These can be canceled by the twenty-seventh, I believe, as Mr. Swackhammer said.
If, if we're successful in passing a budget on the twenty-seventh, we would not need those. If we have additional questions, we just wanted to make sure the public were aware of those dates.
And I will tell you, if it goes to the twenty-eighth, and I already told them, I do have a ballgame that night, so I'll ask Mr. Peters to be the chair that night.
And I won't be here either, so I don't know how that falls, Mr. Kirby.
I think you have to pick a, a second president pro tem. I don't think there's one identified in the room.
I will ask then, since she is retiring, I will ask Ms. Biggs. She will sit in that night as president pro tem, if, if it comes to the point we have to have that meeting on the twenty-eighth.
In the form of a motion, I nominate Ms. Biggs to be the assistant, assistant.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Colby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Also, you see there, liquor control notice. Mayor, you want to speak to that, just a second?
Yeah, before that, I just want to make it clear, everybody knows, there's, the meeting is on Monday, the twenty-seventh, and there'll be the budget, and there'll be some, some new items that the auditor's office will need passed. So if we do third reading on the budget on Monday, the twenty-seventh, and can do, and can pass the legislation that the auditor's office needs on first reading on Monday, the twenty-seventh, will be done for the year.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
Yes.
So we was able to do that last year, hope we will do that this year too and not need to meet. Then if, if we do that on the twenty-seventh, we will cancel the meetings on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. So I want to make sure that everyone's clear on that, since nobody's going to be here on the twenty-eighth. The, the liquor thing is another one of those, every time someone in the city with a liquor license goes for renewal, council ha, gets this letter. We've got many of them where you can have a hearing if you want, or you can say, no, not necessary. This one is for the liquor license that Speedway holds.
Is there a motion or anyone, from, Mr. Peters?
I move that we waive any hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Colby, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Other new business to be brought before council? Mr. Mayor?
I request a executive session for, as mentioned there, that is on the agenda at the bottom. I promise it will be a very short one. I just want to make sure council's updated on a, a couple quick points of negotiations.
Mr. Peters?
Oh.
Yeah.
And I'd like for everyone at the table to stay.
I'll move that we enter into an executive session for the purpose of preparing new contract negotiations concerning employee contracts with the City of Jackson.
Mr. Newkirk, second? All those, before we say it, and I would say that there is no other business you expect to come out of this.
Unexpected.
I know Pete's getting his jacket on, but he didn't come out.
There'll be no business expected after this.
All those in favor. No, I'm sorry. Bill Cole.
Foster.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Call. Sorry, they're.
Yes, yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Biggs.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
We'll move into executive session at eight fifty-five. I forget it. Is there anything else to be brought before council this evening?
I'd like to talk to Mr. Newkirk afterwards to start coordinating some drainage ditch work that we want to do in your ward, starting at first part of next year.
All right. I want, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Bob, is there a second? Mr. Peters? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Leading is adjourned. Merry Christmas to you all.